I'm calling you back just to tell you what I know, but I'd be happy to give you the Mr. Spohner's number if he's like, no, it's fine. And so then I have to say, so this is your, I said, no, I get it here.
Yeah.
The one thing that's, you know, you just, um, the coast of the side is a social distance day and the certain capacity and I said, well, that'd be one thing. Now, just.
Yeah.
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 Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for June 9th, 2020. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll start then with the agenda review, Bob. Mr. Chair, we do have one change to the agenda this morning. I need to add a setting of a hearing for County Ditch 92, and that'll be under Administrative Services. All right.
I'll move through the amended agenda.
Brunder will second.
All right, we've got a motion and we have a second. Are there any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye. All right, then we'll get right into Public Works with Mr. Tiltis. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
Well, we've got a fairly busy agenda with some action items, some discussion items, and then some information on some of our projects. The first action item is consideration of stated Project 007601-19. Change order number three, this is for the surcharge area south of CASA 90, the piece between 193rd and 195th Lane. This is the segment where we were required to put down geotextile fabric sand surcharge, and then we actually fill clay surcharge over the top of the remainder. The reason we are bringing you this change order today is because you're fully aware we encountered archaeological artifacts in this area and were delayed in receiving our Army Corps of Engineers permit by two full years. So as a product of the loss of those two years due to the permitting delays, we, the contractor obviously subsequently completed the remainder of the project, they're no longer there working. So to complete this work, which is basically come in, put down a two-foot lift of fill, and then let it settle for a 14-day period, and then come back again and put another two feet of fill in for seven different cycles, requires multiple mobilizations, bringing the equipment to and from the site, and bringing staff to and from the site. So that's where you'll see the primary cost increase is in the mobilization cost, and also the common embankment material sources, they had to change their pit that they're bringing it from, and then because they were no longer trucking to this project, there were increased costs associated with the work. You'll see increases as well as decreases of unit prices and contract quantities to adjust the work accordingly. So where you see parentheses, those are reduced dollars. And as a reminder, the project is funded with the Minnesota State Turnback Account, so this will not come out of our local dollars for county stated highway or local option or sales tax. So I would recommend approval of the change orders and complete the remainder of this work, and with the surcharge in place, we would be in position to reconstruct the segment from 9 to 90 in 2021.
Brunder will move approval.
Purvis seconds. They have a motion and a second, any discussion on this?
It's too bad that we had this much more money had to be spent because of delays, but that is what it is, I guess.
And not, not as a justification, but on just an order of magnitude, the contract as a whole is over $10 million.
Yeah.
So this is an impact, but if you look at a percentage standpoint, it's, it's a hit, but not as big as if it were a $1 or $2 million job.
It's just a lot more of the, like you said, the mobilization, you know, going back and forth as a project.
Absolutely.
I think anybody knows construction at all understands what, what the cost factors here, you know? You can't, you can't bring in all those trucks and loaders and whatever they have.
Yep.
Just like that.
Absolutely.
It costs money to do that, so.
Absolutely.
I understand that, it's just too bad it had to be delayed so long by the powers that be.
I wholeheartedly agree, and we've been frustrated, and just finally to see the light at the end of the tunnel and see that first lift going on is, is very rewarding.
Yeah.
You must have saw that, I mean, you just see that.
I did.
Yeah, just for whatever reason.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Next item.
State Project 00709005, CASA 16 Trail, project agreement for federal participation in advanced construction. As you're aware, we applied for and received Federal Transportation Alternatives dollars to help us construct the county stated Highway 16 Trail from Stadium Road to Pleasant Street in Mankato. We're getting approximately $580,000 programmed of federal dollars towards that project. Originally, we were planned to advance construct, meaning the county would pay in advance the federal dollars because the federal dollars were $2,023. There's actually been an opening in the federal aid program where we will be able to be reimbursed $259,000 in fiscal year 2021, and then the balance approximately $170,000, $171,000 in fiscal year 2023. So this is a agreement documenting our advanced construction funding of said project, and we have that programmed within our 2020 construction budget.
I'll move approval.
Peoples, seconds. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye.
All right.
Next item.
State Project 00709005, CASA 16 Trail, project agreement for federal participation in advanced construction. As you're aware, we applied for and received Federal Transportation Alternatives dollars to help us construct the county stated Highway 16 Trail from Stadium Road to Pleasant Street in Mankato. We're getting approximately $580,000 programmed of federal dollars towards that project. Originally, we were planned to advance construct, meaning the county would pay in advance the federal dollars because the federal dollars were $2,023. There's actually been an opening in the federal aid program where we will be able to be reimbursed $259,000 in fiscal year 2021, and then the balance approximately $170,000, $171,000 in fiscal year 2023. So this is a agreement documenting our advanced construction funding of said project, and we have that programmed within our 2020 construction budget.
I'll move approval.
Peoples, seconds. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye.
All right.
That's good news.
Yes.
That's very good news.
Good to see that tracking towards construction. Resolution for the same state project number for the same project, this is necessary part of the MinDOT agreement, they not only require the signed agreement, but also a resolution by the governing board, so I would recommend approval of that as well.
Landcamer moves approval.
Peoples, seconds. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Not seeing any discussion. Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye. All right.
Another easy one there, Ryan.
I should have brought more to the table today.
Action item number four is consideration of an Excel Energy Hall Road Use and Temporary
Access Agreement. This agreement was coordinated with Excel Energy and actually jointly developed with Niclet County. The Niclet County engineer and I have been working on this agreement so that we can have contextually similar agreements with Excel, so that we're both asking the same things. There may be a few caveats or nuances that are slightly different within our agreements, however, they're going to be very, very similar. The agreement permits Excel to use certain Blue Earth County roads for hall roads and for access during construction of the Huntley to Wilmouth, 345 kilovolt transmission line project, that's a very massive transmission line project, I know Commissioner Purvis has been involved with the planning of it. So the agreement includes provisions requiring Excel to protect the road surfaces, document existing conditions, and repair if there are any damages effectively, and also permits them to build temporary road accesses for the duration of the project that then have to be removed and things returned to preexisting conditions. I would recommend approval of that agreement as it's.
Purvis makes that motion?
Brunder will second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? I understand there's some of the issues here, to make sure that they put the poles back far enough from the road so in the future.
Yes, we've worked with them and gotten as much as we're probably going to be able to get, as this was approved by the Minnesota PUC, they effectively have the ability to put the poles about wherever they want. They were considerate to an extent and did try to move a few poles back where we had concerns, especially for future reconstruction, and our objective was to try to get them, instead of sitting at right at the 50-foot line, maybe back to 60 feet, because we do widen the roads as we reconstruct in the future. So they did facilitate a few relocations in some other areas, we'll have to make future design revisions to work around the poles. So they were accommodating to an extent, and I am appreciative of their efforts, but some of those areas, they'd already had the land purchased, and landowners were refusing to have the pole encroach further into their field, so I am understanding and respectful of that as well.
Understand. Any other discussion?
No.
Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcamer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye.
All right. With that, I would like to move into our discussion items. In our 2020 budget, we had had a capital equipment purchase of a loader-mounted snowblower, and as many of you may recall from several past discussions, this was part of our deferred equipment initiative, knowing we had several pieces of equipment that were very expensive and very old and in poor condition. The board has been very supportive of working through a staggered approach to replacing those pieces of equipment. Those aren't our routine pieces of equipment that need replacement every 10 years or so. They're ones that aren't used as often, but were long past due for replacement. With that being said, the units that we were looking at replacing with that loader-mounted snowblower would be one of two truck-mounted snowblowers. I know many of you have seen these pieces of equipment. The current equipment that we have is unit number 11, which is a 1951 MDL snowblower on a 1981 chassis truck. This truck currently needs an axle replacement to be operable. This is the one that we would like to replace right away, and I'd be happy to pass that around if anybody would like to take a closer look. Most of you have seen it in the yard or pictures of it or horror stories. The other unit that we'd be looking to replace in the next cycle for deferred equipment would be unit 104. That's a 1969 Oshkosh rotary snowblower truck, aptly named Thunder. Everybody in a mile radius knows when Thunder is running. That is still mechanically operable. I know the operators, when they run it, wear earplugs and headphones because of the noise to just be able to withstand it. So we had $180,000 budgeted in our 2020 budget, and I certainly understand the budgetary constraints that the county's facing, and that's why I brought this forward for discussion today. As we had had that budgeted, I wanted to gauge the board's interest in whether or not this is something that we would pursue or something that we would have to continue to defer. What we would be looking at replacement, just for information purposes, would be either a Leroux snowblower unit or a Ferris snowcrete unit, both approximately $165,000. They're 300 to 310 horsepower heads that are attached to a loader and snowblower. So there, it's a self-contained powered unit, and the benefit that we see within our department of using a unit similar to one of these is that it also frees up a piece of equipment, the loader that is used to run it in the winter could be used throughout the remainder of the year to load trucks and work at our shops, and we're already a little bit thin on loaders, so it's, it's at least an extension of the existing equipment, not another specialized piece, another motor per se or vehicle that has to be registered. So with that being said, there is also another option, that's a larger unit that's $340,000 outside, obviously outside of our budget, but I guess I was, I'm here to, you know, this is certainly a needed piece of equipment. Depending on the snow conditions in the year, we, we certainly use them pretty much every year if we don't have extreme drifting. In cases like February of 2019, we actually had to hire several farmers and contractors that had large tractor snowblowers just to get everything unplugged, and we had a record-setting snowfall. And pieces of equipment, the other, the other one of these that we have, and we actually have two, one is just spare parts because it's not operable anymore. We use those spare parts to support the 1980 Snowgo MP3D loader-mounted blower. So the newest piece of equipment we have is 1980, so 40-plus years old, and again, that truck is running a 1951 snowblower attachment on it. So I wanted to bring it forward for discussion. If the board is accepting of the Public Works Department soliciting for bids, we would do so. If it's something they would like to see deferred until the budget is perhaps more clear, then we would have to reassess our budget. In the meantime, we may or may not, I can't prognosticate if we'll have to have stick money into those pieces of equipment. Obviously, we know we'll have several thousands of dollars put into a new axle for the 1981 unit.
How much was that new one again, Ryan?
About with, Chad, I think, was being pretty conservative with his numbers, $165,000.
With the new loader?
That would be on an existing loader that we have, and then I think one of the future purchases we were looking at was a new loader, which we've actually already kind of taken care of that by earlier this year because we had had the backhoe motor go out. We decided instead of trading in one of our loaders, that we would just keep that in this cycle, and then we'll trade it in in the future to get that extra piece of equipment, loader, to run these blowers.
That's a lot of, Brunder, here, that's a lot of money for a, Mr. Chair, that's a lot of money for the front-end snowblower, but it's a piece of equipment that I think in the winter, when we need it the most, we can't just call someone else and get it because they're all busy, I think is what's probably going to happen. And we've been talking about this for a long time, it's something that's 40 years old, one going to be hard to get parts for, and it's really hard to justify spending several thousand dollars on a truck or a piece of equipment that is at the end of its life. I certainly think we should at least move forward and get the bids. We can always reject the bids, I hate to have people go through that, but if we don't get, is it something we even have this year, or is it already too late for that?
I think it's something we could get ordered and certainly have by the winter if we get moving on it. And maybe one other item to add is the reason we're not looking at a truck-mounted unit to replace is because they're at least $100,000 more, if not greater, so.
Yeah, you're just getting, people here, you're just getting that piece that you're, the plow itself for the, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I remember back to 2009 when we cut our budget significantly because of the financial situation, and the people in the rural areas were very upset that the roads weren't clear. So I think if, I agree with Kip that if we, it should at least get bids, see where we're at with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would agree, and when you're talking about, I want to tell you, one piece, the power unit was 1951?
The blower unit was 1951. The other entire truck and blower was 1960.
Was 80?
The new one's 1980.
Yeah, and you have it pretty well, you have it budgeted, so I, I think it should be done.
Mr. Chair, this is Landcamer. I, I think it's fine to get bids, and I think we're going to have to see what budget is too. I mean, I, I have no idea where we're going to be in the budget, and I don't think anybody does. Legislature's supposed to go back in, but I don't know what will happen there, so as long as we can reject the bids if we have to, I'm okay with it.
So, and I guess with respect to bids, if you'd like sealed proposals, we'll go that route for consideration in accordance with the county's procurement policy, or if you'd like me to bring them forward regardless. Many of the prices that we are quoting are based off state bid, so they're relatively locked in.
Pretty close.
Yes, and whether we'd want to see if we get any trade-in on the unit, I think we'd be better off probably just trying to put it on min bid and see if anybody has interest for maybe just parts or something like that.
Well, there's some of us, I grew up myself, and I know Commissioner Purvis, I grew up on a farm. Back in the day when we had some nasty snowstorms like we had 19 and back in '09, I remember my dad having a snowblower on the back of our 4020 John Deere and, and actually cleaning off a county road, driving backwards down the county road. This is up in the River Valley, north of Breckenridge, Minnesota, when we had, we'd get a blizzard going, and of course, the blizzard goes on for three days and you can see sunshine up above, but it's, it is so needed for people to be able to get, you know, to town. I mean, state highway was opened up, all the county roads were shut down because there was no way that the county could clean off the roads. So it's well-needed, it's, it's an emergency issue if somebody has a heart attack, somebody has an issue that an ambulance has to get through. I've been there on duty when, when the police and ambulance crew has to follow the snowblower to a house. It's, it's an important piece of equipment. I do know, just like everybody else, how serious our budget issues are this year, but I certainly think we better get some bids and see what, and then talk about it after we get to bids.
Okay, sounds good. Appreciate that discussion, it's very helpful for us, and I wholeheartedly agree, I was concerned bringing it forward, but I do appreciate your consideration because I certainly understand the global picture that the county is facing, but again, if one of these units is down and out, we're going to have a lot of people that are stuck in a major snow event, so we're appreciative of that.
Yeah, my dad did that, he had a heat houser on the 4020 too, so it was.
That's, that's what we had in several areas, we had to get area farmers to help us out and then pay them accordingly on an hourly basis, and that adds up fairly quickly, but obviously 2019 was an extreme year.
Mr. Chair, I'm still stuck on the driving backwards with it.
Well, when your snowblower's on the back of your.
I understand, I just said.
I was amazed at how my dad did that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm impressed with that.
And this next item for discussion, I'll apologize right away, it's not on my agenda, and I know a couple of you have brought it up this morning, the governor's announcement regarding the next stage of opening things within the state, came out after I had submitted my agenda to the board or to Jesse to be included in the board packet. But the governor has announced that June 10th, pools will be able to open with six-foot social distancing and at 50% capacity as restrictions in place. The current state guidance also does state that public and private beaches may be open subject to any restrictions by state, tribal, or local authorities. If a beach is open, steps must be taken to maintain social distancing and limit the number of people using the area at the time. I know we've discussed that at our past. social distancing and at 50% capacity as restrictions in place. The current state guidance also does state that public and private beaches may be open subject to any restrictions by state, tribal, or local authorities. If a beach is open, steps must be taken to maintain social distancing and limit the number of people using the area at the time. I know we've discussed that at our past work session and have received direction in that regard. With the state allowing the opening of pools, obviously, we have people out at the parks that are going around our closures, cutting. The fence was actually cut and partially torn down, signs knocked down, et cetera. With that being said, I guess with the state loosening controls on these outdoor recreation activities, staff recommendation would be to remove fencing and beach closed signage, open the Duck Lake Park gate, open pavilions with restrictions to match the state requirements, and install signage around the beach and pavilion areas. And I do have a sample of the signage that was going to be posted in a much larger sign within our campgrounds and in ours. And this is very similar to what the city of Mankato is using as well and has been trying to evolve.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we make the signs? Or do we have somebody else make them?
Jesse has a consultant that's helping us graphically design these and then we're making these with our printers and laminating them and putting them up on.
I was just curious.
Plywood, et cetera.
I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I do too.
Yep, I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it, but I'm extremely disappointed in people who would cut the fencing and it's a sad commentary.
Reading the social media posts, it's, there's definitely two sides to it. And you see the people that don't care and are going to disobey it regardless. So to an extent, I think we agree with you that we're better off just trying to manage it in that regard, especially with the heat wave we've had. And then you do see the other side though, too, of people that see the large crowds and are concerned about still the ongoing pandemic and say, nope, I'm not interested in that. And so again, so much of it goes to personal accountability and what can we socially engineer and what can we not?
And, and we will have a sign that says you must maintain six feet of separation.
Yeah, that's on here.
That would be on this.
But I mean, I, you know.
And then again, these would be larger and posted throughout the beach areas and bathhouses, et cetera.
And I'm sure they're all listening to what those signs say.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, it's amazing how people think they don't have to follow the law.
Well.
But it's a sad commentary.
We've seen enough of that lately, so.
Sad commentary.
All right. We will get those opened up tomorrow and, and get up appropriate signage to try to at least advise people for their own safety and safety of the others out there.
Please thank the park managers for the work they're doing because.
Thank you for that.
Blue River County has been known to really have diamonds when it comes to parks. And it's all because of your staff and the park managers that do that. So thank them very much from the board, please.
I will do that. Moving on to information items, construction project updates. County State Highway 10 from east of Vernon Center to 1, the road was closed on May 26 for construction to begin. They are doing tree, tree removals have been completed, topsoil stripping, tile exploration is underway. A little bit of a slow start, Mathwitt's had some other projects they were wrapping up. I'm still very confident, you know, with a couple of weeks it's really been closed, that they're still within their capabilities of getting that done on time. They have a lot of resources and when they bring the forces in, it'll be, it'll progress fairly well, I believe.
I see they're starting to move dirt in my area now, so that's a good sign.
Yes, yes. The 2020 Batumis overlays, Kasaw 1014, county roads 174 and 177 have been completed. Kasaw 8 is underway. And we still have to do 617 and county road 112, so that's moving along as well, keeping our folks busy and smoothing and strengthening our rural roads. Kasaw 1 and Good Thunder, the pavement and base has been removed. The temporary water connections have been completed for the water main replacement and they're working on the deep storm sort of that runs down the center of the road this week. So that's also progressing nicely and good to see some progress. And then Kasaw 1 from 9 to 90, surcharge, the fabric and sand lift were placed last week. They're currently in that 14-day waiting period before they can bring the next lift, which will be clay materials on. So two lifts every, two-foot lift every 14 days is a slow process, but saves us a lot of money because if we were to dig out all the poor soils, we, they might be, encounter China at that rate that we're going there. Planning projects updates, Kasaw 27 from 17 to 2, we received the Army Corps permit on June 3rd, so that's always a great sign. So that really gets us down to finalizing the design with Great River Energy for the transmission, power poles that are out there, the relocation of those poles and working with them to try to minimize how many have to be relocated or adjusted through our design. I will be bringing, anticipate bringing a relocation agreement forward to the board next month for approval for the power pole relocations. Right-of-way is progressing well. It's picking up as far as the pace goes now that Jack and Ryan have been able to actually go out and physically meet with people. It's much more effective that way and they're able to start getting signatures on the offers and deeds and recording deeds, et cetera. So we're rounding the corner in that regard. They still have work to do, but it's gone, gone fairly well and I'm very appreciative of the work that those guys are doing. They're very good with people, they're very patient and very skilled at those negotiations. 6D Stadium Road and Pole Road Roundabout, Minnesota Paving and Materials, formerly SMC, plans to close the intersection beginning work on June 15th, completion date of late August. So again, the city of Mankato is a lead agency on that project. We are a project partner in funding and coordination, et cetera, but they'll be overseeing the construction and administration.
What date are these starting?
June 15th.
June 15th?
Well, that's right around the corner.
Yes.
Monday. Have to find a different way to go to my daughter's place.
Yes.
For a short, for several months.
Several months.
The Kasaw 41 Bridge Replacement Project, I'm going to start with disappointing news and then I'll round the corner. Because it's a federal aid contract, the plan requires federal aid review, which is more intensive than just going to the local district office. It has to go to the central office. There have been several rounds of revisions that MNDOT has required, I think somewhat due to the fact that they're all spread out and not in a central location. So I think some of it can be probably attributed to teleworking in COVID. It's extremely frustrating to lose at least two weeks, if not more, on this revisions that have been requested and that they weren't all balled into one round of revisions. And we could generally, the process would be we make a round of revisions, we get it back instead of having to make three rounds. That has resulted in delayed approval to advertise for bids. Right now, we anticipate a July bid letting with work starting in late July or early August. So it's at least a month later than we wanted to get started. It's still within the realm of getting the work done.
If it is something.
It should be. If it goes much later or if we have a compelling reason, you know, we do have the project designed to build the new bridge, leave the road and the old bridge in. So maybe if there's good reasoning to not rebuild the road this year, we could consider that, but we haven't gone down that path yet. I'm going to round, round the corner to the good news. We are receiving an unanticipated motor vehicle lease sales tax funds towards the bridge's costs. We're getting some state bridge bond, bridge money toward the bridge replacement project costs, and that's going to be approximately $700,000 that we had not budgeted for in the project.
Very good news.
Yeah, so with that being said, I can buy a month of time for $700,000. So we were very happy to hear that and had not had that originally budgeted because it didn't show up in the STIP. So this will free up some 2020 County State Highway funds that could go towards other projects within our program, either in this year yet, perhaps with some small bridges, box cover projects. We want to see how 27 shakes out once we get that bid. Or it can also carry into 2021 to help offset some of those lost revenues that we're certainly likely to face.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
With MNDOT having to go to various people in order to get these approvals.
Yes.
Are they electronic or are they doing paper?
Electronic.
Okay. Because what I've heard on the Blue Ribbon Committee is when they're electronic, it usually cuts about two weeks off just because it was quicker and you can grab it from anywhere. I was just curious, so thank you.
Yeah. The 57 and Riverfront Drive Roundabout Interchange at US Highway 14, Bolton and Mink has completed the 30% design and they're moving towards 60% detailed design. The staff is coordinating with MNDOT, City of Mankato for future maintenance and operations, so that'll be part of that long-term cooperative agreement between the agencies for that construction project and ongoing maintenance activities.
That 21?
2021 construction plan, yes. So we'll have a very busy.
We're going to have a busy year next year.
2021 regardless and, you know, it may just be, if we get with the turnback project and with this and potentially Victory Drive, it may be one where it might just make sense to have the rural reconstruction projects slide back a year and maybe put more money into maintenance overlays, things of that nature, and still put money out into the rural areas, but put it into overlays and things like that that we can deliver a little bit more, a little more effectively. Kasaw 1 from 9 to 90, staff is going to resume right-of-way acquisition after 27 is completed and design will be finalized following the right-of-way acquisition or in parallel with it because we do run into little design variations that we need to include for landowners. And then we would again, anticipate 2021 construction on that project. The Kasaw 16 Trail Project, the final federal aid plans were submitted for approval a few weeks ago. We remain hopeful for a late July or early August bid letting with construction this fall and early spring 21. Kasaw 82 Victory Drive from Stadium to Hoffman, Bolton and Mink is finalizing the feasibility report and will begin detailed design following city and county approval of the feasibility report. I will maybe note that a feasibility report is not a common item that we do. It's really more required when we included it in the scope because it was helpful for us. We had already reviewed the geometrics, that was a large component of the feasibility report, more critical for the city so that they are able to do assessments if they choose to do so. 27, City of Eagle Lake Water Main Replacement Project. I know we've talked about the fact that the city's water main is failing and we had originally looked at maybe doing a project this year. They've since televised their sanitary sewer and have found many issues with that as well. The sanitary sewer is ventrified clay pipe that was not replaced during the 1983 construction of the road. So when they televise it, they found road intrusions all over the place, inflow infiltration, broken clay pipes. So they're thinking that they want to replace or do something with the sanitary sewer as well, which would push that project from kind of half of the pavement and just water main into more of a full reconstruction. They are evaluating trenchless technology, perhaps a pipe bursting and directional boring approach in lieu of full reconstruction. Right now, the road doesn't need to be reconstructed, it just needs pavement rehabilitation. So this would, if, depending how the project unfurls, it'll be a different approach to cost sharing than we typically would see because again, the road has 20 to 30 years left in it, in my opinion, as far as the curb and gutter and the pavement. We can do a lot with pavement rehabilitation or recycling that would not require full reconstruction. So we'll, we'll work with the city on that. They're, they're again evaluating alternative methods and going to be bringing some sculpting ideas forward, so we'll have future discussions on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Brunder here. So if they do do the sewer pipe, you think they'll have to take up the curb and gutter and everything?
Yes, because the location is out on the.
It is, okay.
Out on the edge and unfortunately, it's about four feet, it's, it's about eight to 10 feet deep and it's about four feet away from the storm sewer. So all the storm sewer would have to come out too. Yeah, it jacks up the project cost very quickly and stuff that without their utilities being out there would not be necessary for, for our road to function in its purpose and the county's function for the road.
Yeah, the pavement needs some work, but the curb and gutter is all pretty solid on that street yet.
So would that, would, would the city then put in more money on that?
That's what we need to work through once they have a clearer scope of what their project is going to look like with respect to the utility relocations. But I guess what I would propose right now is that the county would cost participate in what we would do for a road of that with respect to pavement rehabilitation, we would identify those costs and that would be our share. And beyond that, it would be a city cost because again, it's unnecessary for the road, it's the city utilities. So unfortunately, that decision was made back then. I'm sure the pipe was in good shape 40 years ago.
Absolutely. It's a hard, it's a hard decision and it's, you know, I'm sure the, the city knows that too.
Surprised the water main is failing because it's ductile iron pipe that typically would last, you know, 75 years. And I think that was installed with the project and we're assuming there's cathodic issues where the soils are a little bit hot or corrosive and eating away at the pipe. They had several breaks.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one more question, please. Normally, when we redo a county road through a city, it's 9010, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Miscellaneous items, Rapid and DAM update. I don't have a lot of pertinent information from Eagle Creek Renewable Energy since our last call or since the last time we've spoken with the board about it. They're supposed to be working on gathering information. They have requested a subsequent call later this week. We're still waiting for an agenda from them before we finalize a time. And thank you, Chair Strummer, for providing times that you're available to have those discussions. I have spoken with Jason Boyle, who is with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources DAM Safety Office for funding, possible funding alternatives for a, the removal option. Not, not a lot of silver bullet answers, I guess I would say, or clear-cut answers, maybe would be a better way to phrase it. He did mention that we should look into LaSard-Sam state grants, outdoor heritage state grants for stream restoration, or possibly US Fish and Wildlife Service federal funding. So I will look into those and he was going to also email me, I think, some contact information for some of those programs and so I can call and pick those folks' brains. And once we get more information from Eagle Creek, then I think we'll have further discussions in the future about obviously studies that would be warranted and how we want to scope those to evaluate the alternatives that the board would like to consider pursuing. So that's all I have for today. I'm appreciative of your time and be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
That's all I got, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, thank you.
Are we ready for the county attorney's update?
Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning. So Pat and I discussed some information that you may want to be aware of. The court hearings are steadily increasing as things are returning to whatever the new normal will look like. We have not had yet the arraignment court hearings, so that's when there's around probably 30 to 50 individuals at the courthouse. The court has indicated they're looking at a staggering set of hearings so that we're limiting the number of individuals that are at the courthouse at one time. Jury trials are expected to begin again in July. As you're aware, we are one of the pilot counties to be going, trying one of those and coming up with some additional guidance and details for the rest of the state. There are around, what we've been told anyways, about 1,000 mandatory court hearings that are yet to be scheduled at this time. So we're anticipating quite a large amount of cases coming through as things continue to open up. As you're aware, we have about 10,000 hearings a year and you'll see from the report that most of those numbers are down. What you will probably notice is that the civil commitments are currently up. And I think that's about it for, for our office. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or defer them to Pat.
With, with the whole pandemic.
And I think that's about it for, for our office. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those or defer them to Pat.
With, with the whole pandemic and everything, have you seen, like, I understand, like, domestic abuse and stuff like that cases actually went up? Is that true, or is that, have you seen that?
Yeah, that's the anticipation, is that those types of cases would increase along with the commitments, just because of the types of businesses that are open, that are available, and that if people are out of work and at home.
Have we seen, like, cases that would normally get caught at schools, like child abuse and stuff like that? Have we seen those cases go down because we don't have the people to report them?
Yeah, I can't speak specifically to the statistics, but in general, with the schools not having that involvement with the children, along with the human services aspect for different types of abuse or neglect, there would also be a concern for the juveniles as well, that may or may not be getting that contact from the various community partners, or the schools, or human services, or the like. But I think they're doing, various other departments are doing contacts via Zoom. I know that probation has been involved in that, human services.
Sure.
And then I believe they're opening up to those contacts now, so there are some involvements. We're being told that there's plans for the summer for the kiddos, but yeah, that's always one of the concerns.
Any other question?
Mr. Chair, I just don't know what this means. It's child protection filings? And what's, what is a tip meeting?
That, those are our truancy meetings. And the truancy meetings, so
Okay.
Blue Earth County has what I would classify as a truancy court with Judge Anderson, and it happens every other Tuesday. And obviously, with those types of matters, we are not currently doing tip meetings. Those are typically with the schools. Community Corrections attends, and then social workers from the schools administration, someone from our office attends to provide resources or additional support to that person. So there's nothing filed within the court for those types of matters. Only if the child isn't on the corrected path, then would something be filed, which is, well, there's another meeting then after that. There's the SART team that gets involved.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yeah, so
I didn't know what it was.
It's the Student Attendance Review Team.
Okay.
And so those individuals get involved. Also, Community Corrections is in the school weekly as well.
Okay. And are we doing much diversion with that?
Yeah, the, the whole premise behind the SART program and the truancy intervention program is that it is handled outside of court.
I think that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've had a really positive response from the community. We've seen our petitions, so those are what we would file in the court to get Judge Anderson involved, but they go through the tip meeting and meet with the SART team, and then there's a plan in place, and so they actually sign to be part of that SART group, the, an agreement which is a diversion agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think diversion is a good thing when it
Yeah.
can happen. I'm, I'm sitting on the Subcommittee on Courts and the Pilots, and we had our first meeting last Friday. And so I asked Pat how many jury trials that were planned, and he said about 35 in Blue Earth County. And I said, but how many of those are probably gonna go to trial? And he thought three to five. I think, just trying to figure out how we're gonna do this, and the sad part is the courts didn't talk to us at all previous to this. So now we're trying to figure it out, and it's, it's some commissioners, it's the county attorneys, public defenders, judges, and then the state courts. So it's an interesting time.
Yeah, will be interesting.
Yeah. And who pays, I think is the elephant in the room.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nicole.
Well, Bob, I think we can jump right into administrative services unless somebody needs a break, we can keep on. Everybody okay?
I'm okay.
All right, Bob?
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for May 19.
Purvis moves a minute.
Pevo seconds.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Pevo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stroemberg?
Aye.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
Brunder will move the bills.
Pevo second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Any discussion? I looked through all the bills, didn't look like anything that really stood out this time.
I went through them all also with Bob.
All right. Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Pevo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stroemberg?
Aye.
All right, we'll get down to the Human Resources Department.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number five is the Human Resources Department agenda. I just have informational items for the board today. We have filled a custody officer, a part-time position in the jail, and we did have a lateral transfer of a care coordinator in our public health unit to a disease and emergency preparedness specialist. And going on to item C then, we had a resignation of a custody officer, so we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then two other positions in human services, a care coordinator and a social worker in our disability services area. The human service director and I had quite a bit of conversation about those positions, given the flexible hiring freeze that we have in place, but felt that, given the revenue generated by these positions and the caseload supported, that it was wise to move ahead with those recruitment. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
I appreciate the work that you do on this. I know it's, it's hard with the type of freeze that we have on, but we have, there's, there's certain staff that we need to have there, such as the jail staff and stuff. We just need to have them there. And right now, the workload is really going on, you know, our, our public health, and everybody, everybody is requesting help from, from the public health issues because of the pandemic and because of the issues. So we need people there to help, help the public out. So thank you very much, and it's a hard decision to make, and I appreciate the work that you do.
Yeah, they are challenging discussions, and we'll continue to have them as we have any turnover. I'm not sure how much turnover we're going to see going forward, just because of the way the economy is at this point in time, but we certainly will take a hard look at any position that becomes vacated.
Okay. Well, I think the next part is the County Board of Appeal and Equalization terms?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two individuals that currently sit on the County Board of Appeal and Equalization whose terms are expiring, and so both individuals have expressed a desire to continue to serve, and so staff are recommending that Mr. Johnson and Ms. Tilges are reappointed for three-year terms expiring in 2023.
I'll move approval.
Pevo seconds.
Landhammer.
I got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I, I just think it's a really positive thing that we have such professionals on this Board of Equalization. That changed quite a few years ago, and I think it, it was a really good choice to put professionals on that board who work in it each and every day, so just a comment.
Okay. Any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Pevo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stroemberg?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number seven in your packet is a pipeline revised easement. Magellan Pipeline has had a pipeline that goes across our poor farm agricultural property south of Mankato for many decades, actually, since 1946 was when the first easement was put in place. That pipeline currently cuts across the ravine on that parcel of land, and that ravine is eroding to the point where they are concerned about a failure of that pipeline. And so they have approached the county about changing the course of that pipeline to go around the ravine, which would create then the need for a new easement. And so I've worked with the County Attorney's Office and with Magellan to come up with a revised easement that reflects kind of current time language that go into easements. Nicole and her staff have assisted us in coming up with an appropriate reimbursement for that right-of-way access and some of the protections that you see in the document in your packet. And so I'm recommending that the board approve this easement so that that pipeline can be rerouted on our property.
Purvis moves approval.
Brunder will second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just a comment, I think this is good that the county is, you know, allowing this to happen when we're trying to reserve, you know, take care of our ravines and all of our water quality issues, because this, this comes down to a water quality issue. If that ravine is getting unstable and causing an issue, it's, just makes good business to agree to move this.
My question, you said this, this is going across the poor farm?
Yes.
So it's county property?
That's correct.
So we're, we're talking about not, not taking up somebody else's property, we're, we're talking about just doing the work on county property?
This easement is all on county property, that's correct.
I love it when there's not, not issues with somebody else's property, so this is good.
Mr. Chair, I, I think this is, as Commissioner Brunder said, a really positive thing. It's going to be much more environmentally sensitive.
Absolutely.
If that failed over the ravine, we'd be
Oh, my God.
have some challenges, so I think it's a good thing.
Yeah.
This will have some impact on our current renter, obviously, so there are some damages that have been factored in here, but, you know, it started out as a kind of a casual request, is how I might describe it, probably six or seven months ago from Magellan, but as the erosion has continued, it's become quite a concern for Magellan.
Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Pevo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stroemberg?
Aye.
All right.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet then is the first quarter donations. You'll see that we have received monetary donations, mostly for the library, both in terms of our summer reading program and for our books by mail program. We also did receive some funds for our dive and rescue activities in the Sheriff's Department, as well as a contribution towards our sentence-to-serv program. Then on the second page, you also see our in-kind donations to the library, as well as volunteer time on the third page, and so recommending the acceptance of the donations report.
Move approval, Landhammer?
Second, Pevo?
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just a comment, two, two really big numbers in this, one from the Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund and one from the Glenn Taylor Foundation. It's really nice, maybe a card would be nice.
That probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I see that we have two of our commissioners that have also donated. That's really appreciated. Thank you, too. And reading this, I, I, one, one thing that comes out that, I guess, I didn't know that we had a large amount, but the, the Mankato Chinese community, which is kind of enlightening. I, I didn't know. I'd, I'd love to find out how many folks we have from that background here in the city. I think that's, that's pretty, that's, that's, that's a positive thing. So, and they've donated quite a few times. That's pretty awesome. Any other discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Pevo?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Landhammer?
Aye.
Chair Stroemberg?
Aye.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number nine in your packet is the financial status report for May 31st. You'll see that our total revenues sit at just under $43 million, and our total expenses at $34.6 million, so kind of reverse that trend that I've been talking about in previous months where expenditures were exceeding our revenue. Obviously, the first half tax payments is what causes that switch to occur. We've had previous discussions here in front of the board regarding our tax collections, and you'll see that it's at 51.5% of our annual budget, so we did have some prepayments that Mike Stahlberger shared with the board within the last few weeks. But we also know that a number of property tax payments were deferred, as well as parcels that we received no payment on. So this, it is a little misleading at this point in time to see those local tax levy dollars higher than what we would expect at this time of year. So there are, as the board has previously mentioned, some uncertainties that are in this budget report currently. When you look at our state and federal revenues, for example, while they're higher than they were this time last year, they still are only at 28% of our annual budget. So we know that a lot of those payments run on either calendar quarter reimbursements, or in some cases, like county program aid, we don't see those payments but twice a year. So we're still expecting our first half payment there. On the expenditure side, the public aid assistance line is running a little higher than expected when you compare to where we're at this time of year in our budget, so that is indicative of some additional demands on probably our, well, our human services department. We also know that we're just getting started with our road construction season, so our contracts and fees line is low at this point, but we'll continue to see that grow throughout the rest of the summer months, so. With that, I'll move on to the enterprise fund. You'll see that our expenditures there are exceeding our revenue. We have some land improvements and machinery costs, so this is one of the years where we might be more in a break-even mode for the landfill as opposed to having our revenues exceed our expenditures. In the cash and investments balances on the second page, you'll see our total available funds sit at a little over $51 million, compared to that six-month operating needs of $54.5 million. We still have an issue with our law library. Commissioner Purvis, just draw your attention to that, where that deficit continues to be in place, and I know some efforts have been put in place to try and get that back under control, but otherwise, our cash balances are healthy in other, other dedicated fund areas. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Chair, why is the law library in such deficit?
Well, I think they had a balance that they were trying to utilize a little bit, so they were making some investments and having books at the library and at the law library. They have made some changes with some of the fees, as I understand it, but Commissioner Purvis, maybe you can speak more to those issues?
Yes, we had a significant fund balance, so we were providing some services that we originally hadn't been providing. Since that time, we've raised the rate a little bit, and that may be something that we do again. We've cut back on all the printed material that's there and rely mostly on the online services and stuff, so it should be coming back in line fairly quick.
Okay.
There was an accounting error that made us believe that we had more money in that fund than what there was, so.
Thank you. I was just curious, because I know electronic has been the norm for quite a while, so.
All right, I think we'll go on to County Ditch 92. Bob?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, this is just setting a hearing. The hearing is proposed for June 23rd at 9:00 AM. This would be another virtual public hearing, but we're recommending that the county board set that time for that public hearing.
Brunder will move approval.
Purvis seconds. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Jesse, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Purvis?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Langkammer?
Aye.
Chair Stuhmberg?
Aye.
All right, I think this goes right into commissioner reports, and Commissioner Langkammer, I think we'll start with you.
Okay. On the 27th, there was a call with Mayo Health Systems to talk about what they're doing, what they see coming, and that type of thing. It was extremely informative, I thought, and I think some of the other people who were in this room were on it too, I know Bob was. After that, I had a meeting on Greater Minnesota Transit. You know, what are we responsible for and what are we not, and talking about some training for people who sit on transit boards. And then later that day, I had an AMC call on the NACO Business Meeting, how that's going to function and what we need to do, and we're still gathering information to try to figure out how to do it in the best way, especially for the elections. On the 28th, I was on a webinar with, on agriculture with Secretary, former Secretaries Johans, Vilsack, and Lichtman, talking about what's going on in ag and what the opportunities are, and also a lot of foreign ag also, so it was interesting. My old boss and when I chaired RAC, we spent a lot of time with Secretary Johans and Lichtman's always been part of that also, so it was an interesting group. On the 29th, I had Region 9 Transportation, and then I had the Blue Ribbon Committee later that day, where we talked about the upcoming group that we were trying to put together to talk to the courts. And as I said earlier, they made these decisions but didn't talk to any county people as to what worked, what didn't work. So Julie has had a conversation with the courts, and that's why this subcommittee was put together to try to figure some stuff out. On June 1st, I had Finance and Air Governmental Affairs with NACO, and we talked about the bond markets, where they were, and actually they're doing much better than we thought, so that's the upside, we'll see. Hopefully, that'll continue. On June 2nd, we had a work session. On the 3rd, we had AMC District 7, Vance had a video, and I thought the meeting went really well for our first virtual meeting with the district. And then later that day, I had the Blue Ribbon Committee from AMC where we talked about solid waste, feedlots, and planting and zoning, talked about exciting. On the 4th, I met with the county attorney and the administration just to kind of talk about where we were on the courts, you know, what were we going to talk about the next day on this meeting, so that was really helpful. And I appreciate Bob and Josh and Pat meeting with me to try to kind of walk me through this. And the 5th, we had the courts work group, which was interesting. And if anybody's interested, I've got the notes from the first meeting. I think trying to figure it out, they're saying for a jury trial, you need three courtrooms. And we also talked about using technology that they're, they've gotten used to during the pandemic, and hopefully, a lot of that will continue, so it's, it sometimes is more helpful for the client, and you can make appointments and a bunch of that stuff. So those conversations are still ongoing, you know, some counties aren't going to have the space for three courtrooms, and size makes a difference. The interest, I think the really positive thing is it's all the players, it's counties, it's the courts, it's the public defender, it's the county attorneys, it's the sheriffs, so I think that's a really positive thing. Can't tell you what the outcome's going to be, but I think having everybody together is an important thing. Then I had the Blue Ribbon Committee later that day, and we talked about human services waivers, of which Angie Youngerberg has been the lead on MACSA, and so has worked really hard on these waivers, bringing MACSA together to talk about these. We're hoping in a special session that either the waivers will be extended or that the emergency declaration will be extended, because that emergency declaration allows us to continue these waivers. If they don't pass the waivers or the emergency declaration is not extended, the waivers go away, and that's a problem for all of us. So, and then yesterday, AMC did a COVID call with Commissioner Jan Malcolm to talk about what she's seeing and what's going on, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Brunder?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last meeting, we had our inter-gov meeting, and we talked a little bit about the wetland project, but we talked a little bit about that piece of property out there, so we got a little bit of a brief on that, but it was a virtual meeting, I thought it went pretty well.
Yeah, I did too.
Then we just discussed some of the other items we got going on in Mankato, a couple board work sessions that were already mentioned, had my emergency EMS meeting, and everything's going good there, we just got another grant for about $400,000 to help do some other programs in the nine-county area, so that'll be very helpful with that organization. MRCI, we had a full board meeting and one executive meeting. MRCI's been looked a lot different as I've been reporting in my other reports, the newspaper has reported that they're closing down, well, they are shutting down all the buildings at this point. I've been told that we will be back, it will look totally different, we will still provide services, but we are going to really have to get more towards the working in the community. We're not going to have as many in-house or workshop settings when we open back up again. We're just waiting for clearance on that, and they're working through that. The MRCI team's been working very hard, trying to cut costs so that they can just keep the doors open and some of the small programs that they have going. But we will be back, as far as I know, and doing some more services in the Blue Earth County, Mankato area, but it'll just look a lot different, be a lot more personal, I think. Had our planning and zoning meeting, we just had one item on the agenda, pretty straightforward, we'll see that next board meeting, and then we had also SECB, my statewide emergency communication legislative meeting, conference call, everything was just basically shut down with the COVID stuff through the months when we tried to go up there and lobby and get some things done, but the staff reported to me that they are still working on the items, and they are, nothing that was obviously overrode the COVID stuff, so we're hoping to get in touch with some of the legislators, and we'll be looking more towards the stuff for next year, so. And then lots of little ditch things to deal with and other constituencies with road projects and drainage. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kip, on the MRCI, have they discussed what they're going to do or what will happen with the special needs people that can't work out in the-
We haven't gotten to that detail, Commissioner.
Because that's a large, large population, the percentage of the people that work through MRCI, they-
Well, it's much smaller than it used to be.
Okay.
Since the Olmstead decision, we have been working towards this-
Right.
At MRCI. When I got on the MRCI board several years ago, I would go up to the Map Drive location, and I always liked to get there a little early and walk around and see what was going on, and that place was full-
Correct.
-of consumers doing all different kinds of projects and work and making money and being productive. Since the Olmstead decision, we've worked away from that, and even before the COVID outbreak, we were in a position to sell the Map Drive property, and that's what our plan was all along, and move everything out to the East Park, because we have gotten a lot of the consumers' jobs in the community and not as many in our workshops. So we were working towards that, so thanks to the administration staff from MRCI for looking that far forward, so it will look more like that. I would hope we will have some in-house programs, and we still have the East Park building up there that's relatively new and a very nice facility and large, so we'll just have to kind of work through that, but we haven't had a lot of discussion on that.
Interesting. Thank you very much. Commissioner Purvis?
Yes, the work sessions were already mentioned. On the 1st of June, we had the Rural Minnesota Energy Board meeting and the PACE meeting, just kind of business as usual there, getting used to the online meetings. Then we had, on the 3rd, we had the AMC District meeting, I thought that went very well for the amount of people that were there, enjoyed that. Then on the 4th, we had the SWCD meeting, and again, that was online and went quite well. And then yesterday, we had AMC Public Safety Committee online meeting, we discussed several proposals that are going to the Public Safety Committee at the legislature tomorrow. Most of them deal with the events around the Minneapolis situation up there. A lot of them are very significant recommendations that will impact the way everybody does business. And I think I'm a little frustrated that it's moving this fast, and we had this information a couple of days ago, we need to do, we had our meeting yesterday, we put our comments in by noon today, and then of course, the committee meeting at the legislature is tomorrow, so I think this is something that we need to watch very closely as we move forward. That's my report.
Thank you. Mark?
Okay, Mr. Chair, let's see, on May 28th, that Thursday, did you have a Partners for Affordable Housing meeting, and of course, we went over all the things with the pandemic and our social distancing with the residents, and we're going to, this weekend, we'll have a virtual strategic planning, not sure how that's going to work, not being a fan of virtual meetings, then to have a strategic planning, but we'll see. We've had, we've always, we've tried to do them more on a regular basis, so everybody thought we should try to continue regardless of the situation today, and they're good to have. Then June 2nd, did have a work session, and then June 3rd, the AMC District 7, and I made most of that, that was actually quite informative, I have to admit, I had a barber's appointment, so.
Lucky you.
Yeah, well.
And you know, the change before and afterwards was amazing.
Yeah, but that was close, I was only about a block away, so that I got back, I got most of the meeting in that, I took advantage of the governor's opening up. Then Kip was chair of RCF, and we had that meeting on the 4th, and it's moving along with, that's moving along, I guess, as it can. June 4th and April, our Mankato area Planning Organization did have a meeting, it was an evening meeting, and a few topics, transportation improvement plan for the coming years, and then I read some discussion on bylaws, so that, Mr. Chair, concludes my-
All right, thank you. Well, our last board meeting was way back in May 19th, so that, three weeks ago. The next day, on the 20th, I had a RAC conference call, Rural Action Caucus, heard from other people in rural parts of the United States, how they're handling the pandemic and everything's going on. On the 21st, I had a full day, I started out at 8:30 in the morning with finance and budget for TDS, and then we had our board meeting at 9:30. Obviously, all this is using Zoom or other places, you know, and then 1:00 that afternoon, I had a NACO Transportation Committee call, and then that afternoon, I did a roundtable discussion with Mr. Freeham and some other individuals on, and I spoke on county issues and what's needed with the county. We had a work session on the 26th, and the 28th, the district meetings for across the state started, and I, they were, they're all on, you know, using a Zoom-type thing, and I'm, so I, because I'm running for second vice president, I'm listening in to everybody's county issues, and it's very, very obvious the pandemic has taken a toll on basically every county across the state of Minnesota. The budget issues, everything else is affecting everybody, but they're all very, very appreciative of county staff and how county staff has really stepped up and taken this on, working from home, doing different things to keep the budget down. So that's always, you know, basically in a nutshell, that's what everybody's saying. I got about three more to listen to, I'm really, I'm not talking, my video is on there, but I'm not really talking, but it's really good to listen to different district meetings from across the state. So on Friday, the 29th, there was a District 10 meeting, on Monday, the 1st, there was a District 9 meeting, and of course, then we had our work session on the 2nd. We had our district meeting on the 7th, on the 3rd, I'm sorry, District 7, district meeting on the 3rd, and then there was a District 8 meeting on the 4th. That afternoon, I had a library board meeting, and then the District 6 meeting was on the 5th, and then I had another finance and budget meeting for TDS on that morning. Yesterday was a District 5 meeting, and yesterday afternoon, I had Toward Zero Death meeting, all these online, and that comes to today. Unless there's anything else?
I move for your turn.
Purvis seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need to do that.
Need to do that.